Everybody in? Everyone sitting down, okay. Welcome to the August work session of the Washington Township Board of Education. This meeting is being videotaped. Anyone that does not want to be seen on television or the Internet may be excused. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We don't have any presentations. Are there any discussion items from anyone on the board?
Yeah.
Mr. Serrano?
Mrs. President, Madam President, I'm sorry.
My mic's not even on.
I'd like to make a motion, and we had this conversation in executive session, and I'd like to make a motion to riff the following position effective September 20th, 2025, the Director of HR.
Any discussion?
So I just think we should not take lightly the importance of HR. That's an area where if we do not do things properly, we're probably going to get ourselves sued and cost the district a lot of money. If the position's vacated, to fill that position, we would have to have a vote to fill that position, so we could just choose to not fill that position until we figure out what to do regarding the position. But I think we all need to think about the importance of HR and, in fact, don't be unwise about a situation that could cost us millions down the road.
Understood. So, thank you, Mr. La Liberty. So, we have currently a $225,000 gap to fill for nine employees who have 20-plus years in the district. That's a gap we'd like to fill. We have a $150,000 gap for pay-to-play that we were told we have to fill because we gave that up last meeting. And on top of that, we're hearing constantly that there's going to be more pain this coming budget cycle with cutting staff, cutting support staff, cutting teachers, et cetera. So, I believe that with the addition of Assistant Business Administrator who came in over budget last week, that individual, and I don't want to cross the line into administering the district because that's the administration's responsibility to determine who's going to absorb these responsibilities, but I do think that they can be dispersed even if it's for a temporary period of time until we're on stable financial footing. So, that's my reasoning. I don't, you know, I don't, I think that this is something that, it's just a hard decision to make, but I think it needs to be made.
Okay. I just have a quick comment. Before you talk about dispersing responsibilities, you need to know what the other people's jobs are, what it entails, the hours that they put in, before you put more on them. So, I think that's more of a find the facts out first before you cut anything and give more responsibility to people that might already have an overload. Just, you know, check it out first before you do anything.
To Elaine's statement, I do think, I think we push, 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 fast, 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 do it, do it, do it. I think with this, we need to slow it down, maybe pump the brakes a little, get all the information that we asked for first, and then, as a group, evaluate what the right step is to take next. I don't think it's something that we need to rush into right now. We have someone until the middle of September. I think it's something that we can hold off on and look at everything and then make a decision versus make a decision and then possibly be screwed later. My opinion.
If I could real quickly. So, Steve, I don't disagree with you. I think we should riff the director. Right? We already talked about that in committee of, and I think Dr. Hibbs' suggestion, I won't speak for him, but as a cost savings measure, is to not have a director. But the conversation was around downgrading the position and having someone lead, just not in a director role. So, I don't disagree with you in terms of a cost savings, but I think so, I mean, I'll agree with ripping the director. I think we already said we were going to do that. I also, to Elaine's point, and we talked about it at length, when we're getting rid of a position, I just think that even before we hire, because there's nothing on the agenda tonight in terms of HR at all, I think we have to really outline all the positions that were cut, including what will be the Director of HR, that position being cut as well, and just see where are those responsibilities going. So, I don't disagree with you. I think we need to have cost savings measures. I think that's already in place.
Any other comments?
Some more. I agree with you, Steve, on the part about the concern, financial concerns, right? I too have concerns about those amounts that you brought up, and I think we're going to face financial constraints next year as well. We're in a bad situation that way. I just don't think this is the way to do it. I also have concerns that you're making recommendations about positions that aren't being recommendations from administration. And if we keep making cuts that aren't in line with recommendations from administration, I think we're going to find ourselves in harm's way.
Mr. Ross, in your experience, have you ever taken HR responsibilities on as a superintendent? Has there ever been a time where you took on HR and you delegated some of the responsibility to the building supervisors, et cetera, to hire, and then, or investigations to a certain position within central administration during your time as a superintendent?
You're correct. When I was superintendent, we didn't have an HR person. The hiring was...
Can't hear you.
I'm sorry. When I was a superintendent, the hiring came through the supervisors to the principals to the superintendent, and the business administrator pretty much handled the conflicts between individuals in the school system.
How long ago was, in what school district?
It was that.
How long ago? And what school district was it? What was the size of the district?
Well, Black Horse Pike. That was three schools, 4,500 kids. Depper, 4,500 kids.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? So, the motion is to riff the Director of HR position. Okay. Roll call, please. Mrs. Bloom?
Abstain.
Mrs. Clancy?
No.
Mrs. Chilla?
No.
Mrs. Hartong?
No.
Mr. La Liberty?
No.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Kozempel?
Yes. Motion fails.
Serrano?
Any other discussion items? Okay.
Wait, I have one. I'm sorry. I wanted to put, I've never done this before, so bear with me. I wanted to put a motion on the floor to consider and talk about a change of our school solicitor from Bush Law Firm. Given the recent, to add to, I don't know. I mean, could it be another attorney from Bush? Maybe. So, maybe I'm putting a motion to change solicitors, if that's possible. I just feel like the incorrect legal information that we've received lately is maybe something that we should consider. We've gotten some not great legal advice.
We have a contract with them. I don't know how that works, Janine, but I'd say probably the safest thing would be to discuss it in committee.
That's what I figured, maybe. That's why I wasn't sure if it was a good motion or if I could put it in committee. But I think it's something that we need to talk about.
Agreed.
Put a second.
Okay. So, we could discuss that in the Finance Committee? It's a contract, so I would imagine business and finance.
Oh, I don't know. I'm not in either one of those committees.
She made a motion.
Well, she made a motion, but I'm not sure.
I think that...
Is it a motion?
If you were to make a motion, you'd have to, like, say who you wanted to be the solicitor. You'd have to say...
Oh, you'd have to, like, um...
Or no, you'd have to say you want to get notice.
Like, we want Megan or something like that.
I'm sorry. By the way, this is Megan.
Erin and Ari are both on vacation.
Am I talking into the mic or am I... So, in my opinion, I think that you would have to, if you want to fire the Bush Law Group, you can make a motion to get rid of the Bush Law Group. If you want to change who actually represents the board, like, from the Bush Law Group, if you want to keep the Bush Law Group, you can have that discussion internally.
Okay. Because that's what I want to do then.
That's what you want to do.
That's what I want to do.
So, you want to withdraw your motion and...
Yeah, I want to withdraw my motion.
Have this conversation in committee.
And then put this...
And the work. Okay, got it. Any other...
I just want to make a clarification about something that was said last meeting. There was a comment from the public that previously I had to step off of negotiations. I think I've already publicly spoken to this. I didn't have to step off negotiations. I said something on social media that I think could have been taken in a way such that it could have created an ethics violation. It also could not have been an ethics violation. It was something I had consultation with the Board Attorney about, but to avoid the embarrassment and the, put any shadow over negotiations, I chose to step off on negotiations because I felt it was the right thing to do. And I think there's a difference with that. So, I just wanted to set the record straight for that. Thank you.
Okay. We'll now have a report from the Director of Data Technology Registration and School Community Outreach, Mr. Distillio.
Thank you, Ms. Kozempel. I have four brief announcements. September is Library Card Sign-Up Month. In celebration, Margaret Hagan Free Public Library will be raffling off eight tickets to the September 28 Phillies game at 3:05 PM. Four tickets will be given to an existing adult Hagan Library cardholder, and four tickets will be given to an adult who obtains a Hagan Library card between September 2nd and September 21st. The winners will be chosen on September 22nd. Today, our teachers, counselors, 10-month secretaries, and other educational service professionals returned to work today. Today was a busy day with meetings and getting geared up for the year. This week is an exciting yet overwhelming time as all are getting ready to receive our students on September 2nd. Wishing all the staff in the district the best this year as they continue positively influence the students. Special thank you to all those that helped out in the food bank. This past week, last Wednesday, we had retired staff, retired principals, current staff members, our junior air force ROTC, and our Teacher of the Year out in the rain last Wednesday to once again devote their time to helping members in our community ensure they have what they need. Is an important facet of what makes us special, and we always appreciate everyone's help that can make it. And then finally, an important announcement. More information is to be coming. Not sure if everybody is aware. However, the New Jersey Department of Education is replacing the NJSLA with the, and the NJGPA tests with adaptive versions. It'll be called the NJSLA Adaptive and the NJGPA Adaptive. This new test will be administered by a company called Cambium and will no longer use the Pearson platform such as TestNav or Pearson Access Next or PAN. So, some key changes and upcoming events that the public might want to know, and formal information will be coming out to families in due time. The fall 2025 test for students in the class of 2026 who have not yet passed the NJGPA must take the Pearson administered version in the fall, which will be in early October. So, that is every single senior who has not passed the NJGPA. That's very important to know. Field testing. Students in grades four through 10 will participate in a field test of the New Jersey NJSLA Adaptive Test. That will be under the Cambium model. That will be in late October or early November. Students in grades 11 and possibly 12 will also complete the field test of the New Jersey GPA Adaptive around that time. In the spring, all students will participate in the NJGPA and NJ, or 11th graders will participate in the NJGPA, and the rest of the district, grades four through 10, will participate in NJSLA administered by Cambium. So, they're phasing out Pearson. We are attending mandatory training, the first training that is going to occur for someone like me, the district test coordinator, or Mr. Gofredo, the technology coordinator. The first available session is September 16th, which we are going to go to, and the technology department is working hard to ensure that all the devices are up to the standard of the new testing. Again, more information to come. We were just informed of this on August 13th with more information that came on August 22nd. So, I appreciate your patience. That is my report, Ms. Kozempel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Distillio. Motion to appro, oh, sorry. Yeah, motion to approve the 14 items of correspondence.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve the minutes from July 8th, which was our special meeting, and July 29th, the regular session.
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Board goals update. I spoke to Lori Bandlow, and she, let me find this, she wants to come back and go over our board self-evaluation. I asked her if she wanted to come to the meeting this month. She suggested that we either have a special meeting or we do it in September. She did give me, or October. She said that we might want to just discuss when that is. So, I'm not sure if we have anything pressing, like, Dr. Hibbs and Janine, you might know if in September, since that's back to school, we have any presentations or if we are kind of open and she could come in September, or should we wait until October?
Yep. I have a question.
Go ahead.
We have Mr. Muller, the school board BA, who's supposed to come in in September and address the board with, about financial issues.
Right. Oh, did you confirm that with him? I know you asked him, but did you confirm that?
He's, I thought I sent it to you. He asked about that, what you wanted on it. I sent it to you, yeah. It's definitely, it's definitely September.
Okay. Well, Lori's available the 2nd, the 3rd, the 4th, the 8th, the 9th, and the 10th. We have meetings on the 16th and the 23rd, so...
In September, you mean?
In September. So, we could add, like, a new...
I think we need to add a meeting.
Add a meeting.
This has gone on too long, almost two years.
Okay. We could have them both come if we add a meeting.
No goals.
Okay. Carol, I think we should have a special meeting because we struggle to get out of executive session and start on time for all the information we have. So, I think it should just be separate.
Can I ask what meeting Connie's talking about?
She had mentioned that she wanted the New Jersey School Board's BA to come out. She had, I think, emailed, I think, to Janine and I and Lori about it.
Oh. Oh, I didn't know anything about it. That's why...
It was just, like, I can't remember.
I put it up before and...
Like, a month or two ago.
And I was to reach out to him, which I did, and he got back to Julie, and the September would be the most appropriate time.
Which of these dates? Go ahead.
I'm just trying to catch up. Can, what's the why? Just out of curiosity.
Well, the, we belong to New Jersey School Boards Association, and they have a lot of resources for boards. And one of the resources is a myriad of workshops that the BA can talk to boards about finances and what we should be aware of, how we can get information to know more about finances, and we want to keep abreast of what's, what's going on. We keep on hearing there's going to be doom and gloom, and we don't want to wait till budget season to start talking about it. So, we have a resource in the BA with the New Jersey School Boards who can come out and do presentations. So, that's where we are.
Just real quick, did you, did you think to ask your own BA that question first, or? I was out for a little bit.
He had, he had indicated to me that he would do that.
Well, I mean, I mean, you guys have a BA sitting right here. I just, I'm wondering if the questions that you're going to ask a BA who's...
I had, I had brought this up. He goes after various school districts. He's not just doing this for Washington Township. This is something he does on a weekly basis. And we talked about it. I said I would contact him. He will contact Janine prior to coming out.
Eric, it's more like for, for points to become, like, it's his...
Get certified?
Yes. It's his presentation that he would give for us to earn points to become certified board. So, it's nothing, like, specific to Washington Township. It's just more of a learning, you know, and we can ask questions and such. Okay. So, the dates were the 2nd and 3rd. These are Lori's dates that she's available, 2, 3, 4, 8, 9, 10.
So, I, I'm just letting you know, I can't do 8, 9, 10. I need to be...
Got it. And I can't do the 9th because we have personnel and business committee.
I have to calendar up.
Yeah.
So, 2...
We don't have any...
2 is like, as in, 2, like, right around the corner?
Yeah.
Okay. So, 2, 3, 4, so...
It's the first day of school. I don't think that's a good day for us.
Yeah. The 4th is, we have a football game.
Mm-hmm.
What about the 3rd?
The 3rd, there's freshman football at Clear, it's at, it's...
The calendar's wide open on the 3rd.
Yeah. I'm lying. I can do the 8th, the 9th and 10th. I can't, I can't do the, anything after the 10th.
Okay.
8th is wide, 8th is wide open, too.
She cannot, she did not, oh, she did give me the 8th, but we have SAC and IA. We have SAC and IA. Yeah.
I can't do SAC and IA on the 10th. I have chemo on the 10th.
Well... No, I mean, the 8th is SAC and IA.
Some of us, on some of those committees, it wouldn't work for you, though. I was going to say if anything could be during the day because...
I mean, I can if it's a Monday or a Wednesday, but there are a lot, I don't know how that works for people that work full-time.
The hell thing is with babysitting or Linda...
I'm good.
Or me, I mean, for IA. I was wondering if maybe we could help it, like, during the day.
On the 4th, Eric, is that a varsity game?
Uh, I see. You're right.
Okay.
We got Penn Salk in, right?
Thanks, Jerry. So, I mean, I can't do the 8th because it's a freshman game and I have a freshman, but I can do a varsity game day. Like, in other words, if it's a varsity game, it's probably at 4:30, right? So, we could meet later?
Uh, no, this one looks like it's 6 to 9.
It's a night game.
Are you going to that?
Yeah. And then Janine has a senior.
Right. Janine has a, yeah. Okay, so...
Well, the first day of school may not be good, but it may be the one that worked the 2nd.
Is everyone okay with that?
That's literally the only date that I can't do. Everything else I can figure out.
Okay. Well, let's go back to her with, I'll just go back to her and tell her none of these dates work and give us more dates.
What about the 3rd?
The 3rd is fine. It's just, I have, my son has football, and I wanted to go. It's the first game.
What time is his game?
Um, 4:30. So, if we meet at, like, 7:30.
Could we do it later? 7:30?
You definitely shouldn't miss this.
No. Why don't we do 7:30 or 8?
If we do 7:30, I can come after.
Let's do that.
Jerry, would I make it here by 7:30 after a freshman game at 4:30?
No. Never.
Because you want to go out and have fun after. Okay. Why don't I just get back, I'm just going to get back to her and tell her these dates are not working, and then I'll send a doodle to everybody with Lori on it, and we'll go from there. Because I don't want to waste time at this meeting doing it, but...
We're talking about that Mr. Muller also.
Yes. All I needed to know is that you wanted to do a special meeting, which I didn't hear from anyone down here. Are you good with it being a special meeting instead of tacking on to one of our meetings? Okay. So, you'll all get a little doodle from me about, about that. So, that's where we're going with goals. All right. Next item, old business. Oh, we're still on old business. Any items of old business?
I have, I have some items.
Go ahead, Connie.
I have three items for old business. I'm going to make a motion on policy 0176. We made a, we made this motion, and it was first reading. I want to make this as the second reading. In policy 0176, keep the first sentence under Section 3, Number 1, and strike the rest.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Steve, second. Any discussion? Yes. For the public, this is the policy that we have about our law firm and the solicitor being a different attorney from the negotiator. And just to, like, give a little background on that so you understand, the solicitor is the person that sits here during the meetings, and we refer to for help in that way, and the negotiator is somebody else that works with the unions. So, we have two separate people doing that, but the, I guess I'll say the wording in the policy is unclear whether or not that, it's just not typical wording. So, sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. I decided to research on this because I know it's a big issue.
Yeah, your mic's on.
I have this from every school in Gloucester County. In Gloucester County, every school except for Gloucester County Institute of Technology and Gloucesters County Special Services filed a Strauss-Asme wording that you gave us. So, I just want people to know about that. You could maybe decide that you want to have a different attorney from the firm. I don't know if how that, but I mean, as far as wording, this is every school in Gloucester County. So, if this is the way they are doing it, I'd like to understand why we want to do it differently. We even said that we would wait to hear what Strauss-Asme had to say, which we did, and between then and now, I've done all this research.
And that's why we did the first, first reading, and it was voted to approve their policy. Now, you're coming back and saying all the districts in Gloucester County follow it. So, now I'm bringing it up for a second reading.
Okay. So, I'll just chime in real quickly. I didn't know this was coming up tonight, so I didn't have the benefit of doing research and bringing it here because I just didn't know it was coming up. I really think that as a board, we have to revisit having a policy committee again because we have a lot of policies we reference through the meetings, and we just don't have a formal policy committee. I don't know where policies are really formally being discussed. I think there's some policies that fit very nicely in committees, but there's others, like, where does this one fit? We don't have a legal committee. We just don't.
Yeah.
So, I just think we have to revisit as a group. Again, I didn't know this was coming up. I would have wanted to do research and get, wrap my mind around it at least. I just, again, I would rather table the motion and talk about it and create a policy committee because we actually run the board through policies. Like, that's how we function.
So, two things.
I think there's a motion on the floor.
Well, there's a motion on the floor. But I just want to address, I just want to address Carol's comments that she's making, which are valid. 10 years ago, we, when you and I were on the board together, we would just have policies that related to the standing committees in those committees. And then we started a policy committee, and Jack McGee went through every single policy that we had. If you want to make a motion to bring that, or you want to suggest that we bring that committee back, I'm fine with it. Right now, the way we're doing it is just putting, I'm sorry, I forget to look this way sometimes. We, right now, we've just been putting them into those, into the committees as they relate. So, if we want to have a policy committee, we can do that. Separate conversation, there's a motion on the floor.
Point of order.[1623.23]
But point, point of order?
Point of order.
If there is a motion to table, the motion that is on the floor, the motion to table comes up first because it's tabling that motion that, you understand? So, if you're motioning to table Colleen's motion, then your motion will go first. If it fails, then your motion goes up.
This, this is another problem. I find a problem, this research that I did, I did the beginning of August because on Janu- um, July 29th, if you look at the minutes, it was discussed that we would have the second reading at the next meeting, which would have been last week. But once again, we never review anything. And I'm not pointing fingers at Lori or anybody else, but my suggestion is, before we have a meeting, we should have the minutes from the meeting before and we should all read over them and see what we decided we were going to discuss at the next meeting. And we don't do that, and I think that that's one of the reasons we get into so much trouble that we never accomplish anything. We slide by the seat of our pants from one meeting to the next. But beware that the fact that this was done by me after the Janu- to July 29th meeting, I didn't wait, I didn't know when it was going to come up. I thought maybe it would come up last week. It didn't. So, here we are this week. It mattered to me enough to do the research because I really was puzzled by what I was hearing from people who speak in public, what I was hearing from people up here, and I thought it was important for me to figure it out using data. Everybody's into data. This is the data from the county.
Yes, thank you very much.
It may best practices to some people, but it's data.
Yeah, Pat, thank you very much because I, I brought up the motion and I, and I then withdrew it because Mrs. Wexler brought up about Asme- Strauss, and I said, "That's a good idea. Let's see what they said."
Right.
Then it came back, what they came back with.
Here it is.
I made the motion, it passed, and we're supposed to be a second. And I agree that we should get the minutes probably in a more timely manner because of the fact that there's follow-up, and we miss, or we're missing things.
Yeah, we've been talking about this since July, but let's just, that's why I'm, let's just move on. So, Carol, now we're going to vote on tabling-
Yes.
Connie's motion. So, a yes vote means you want to table Connie's motion.
Is there a second?
A no moon, mo- vote means you want to-
Well, there would have to be a motion in the second.
That's, okay, I'm just clarifying what yes and no means. So, you first need a second on tabling it. And then-
Second that.
Okay, Elaine's seconding that. So, roll call. Yes means you want to table this, no means you want to vote on it. Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
No.
Mr. Ross?
No.
Mrs. Baker?
No.
Ms. Bloom? Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
And Ms. Kuzempel? No, I started with Ms.-
No.
Sorry, that's right. Thank you. So- Three, four, five, one, two, three, four, so it's five to four. Okay, so now, it was, that failed. So, now we're voting on your motion to make those changes and adopt the policy on second reading. Roll call, please.
We're voting on Connie's motion.
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes means you're agreeing to the changes.
Yeah, yes means you approve the changes to the policy, no means you don't. Ms. Clancy? Ms. Chilla?
No.
Ms. Hartong?
No.
Mr. Liberty?
Since I've never got, I was able to get a, a view from conflict counsel. I've been allowed to talk to them. I'm a no because I don't agree with them.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross? Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel? Yes, motion carries. Connie, did you say-
Okay, I have a second motion. This is a two-part motion. I'm going to make one motion, and then after that, I'm going to make a second one. I make a motion to rescind the riff of nine most senior support staff members of the WTSSA, thereby making them full-time employees once again.
Is there a second? Sorry, is there a second? A second?
A second.
Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, oh, go ahead, Elaine.
Yeah, I thought in discussion that we were supposed to make the other motion first and then your motion second.
Is, is that correct the way she did it?
I don't recall that, and I'll make, this is my motion, this is the motion I made.
Okay. Okay, roll call, please.
It's still discussion.
Wait.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh.
Discussion, right?
I'm, I'm a little confused as, as to the order of things as well. So, I just want clarification before a vote.
Should she do the other one first?
It should probably be that.
Okay, Connie, withdraw your motion and do the other one first.
Pardon me?
Make the other motion first about the sidebar. Withdraw what you just said and do the other one.
Attorney saying that?
Correct.
Okay. Motion to approve a sidebar agreement between the board and the support staff regarding the reinstatement of the nine most senior support staff members of the WTSSA to full-time status. The terms of the sidebar agreement have been verbally agreed to and will be drafted in the form of a sidebar agreement to be presented to and executed by both parties.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call. Mrs. Hartong? Mr. Liberty?
No.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel? Yes, motion carries. Okay, Connie, you can do your second motion.
Second motion, motion to rescind the riff, the riff of the nine most senior support staff members of the WTSSA, thereby making them full-time employees once again.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Scott?
Yeah. So, I'm going to be voting no because if this was the intent, I think it should have been rolled into the original budget, and you guys should have put the tax levy because finding the money's going to be difficult, so, that's, that's why I'm going to be a no.
Just a point of clarity, a net, Dr. Hibbs did report that a net found the money, so it is covered. I can say that right?
Clarify that.
What?
Clarify that.
She's using money from her budget.
She's transferring money. Yeah, she's transferring it, sorry, I didn't mean to say found. She's transferring money from hers into this, okay. Any other discussion? Roll call. Mr. Liberty?
No.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartong? Ms. Kuzempel? Yes, motion carries, thank you.
The third thing I want to do?
Okay.
Last board meeting on the 19th, we had a meeting on the 19th, on the 20th, we had a negotiation session with the WTEA. And I'd like to bring up a, an update on that negotiation session. The board negotiations committee met with the WTEA last week on Thursday, August, I'm sorry, it was the 21st we met, August 21st. After previously making very good progress with the WTEA as a committee, this month, we were attacked with a pa- a, a paradigm shift of new ideas, both externally, in public session from board members, not on the committee, and as seen here in our last public meeting, and internally, from members of the committee. The board members on the committee were receptive to the input from members of the administration and chose to follow their guidance. Unfortunately, as a result, we hit a stalemate with the WTEA and declared impasse. Now, we will head into mediation with PERC at a continued cost to the district.
Can you, can you clarify? And I don't know what we can talk about here or not here. Can, can you clarify, there was guidance provided. What was said guidance?
Guidance provided by the administration.
Can you, for transparency-
I cannot get into more details.
Well, I think that's, that's terrible to do as you're, you're calling people out without actually being transparent. So, would you like an opportunity to actually be transparent?
I'm, I'm going to say this, and I'm pretty sure I can say it. Before you, you guys left the room, we were trying to actually get you back in to talk further about the full contract and everything else that, that needed to be discussed. And, and you, you were the one who left the room.
I'm not going to get into the details.
You need to.
I'll be glad to-
And I, I'm not, I'm not going to leave afterwards, I'm not going to do that.
You don't get to do that.
I'm just saying that we were-
I make a motion that we go into executive.
It wasn't our advice.
That should be, that should be taken and seconded right now.
Second.
We-
Thank you.
Why are we going into executive? I think this conversation just needs to end, and we can need, we have to go into executive at the end anyway.
No, that's not, it's not appropriate what was said. There should be a discussion in executive, for sure.
Uh, can we have that at the end of the meeting? I mean, we're going to be in executive for 45 minutes.
Okay, I mean, what do we do again?
It's the business of the board.
There's no second for Pat, for her motion, so?
Scott seconded it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And if, if it fails, I, I need to speak then, so.
You know what, I'm not even sure if I can make a motion because I'm conflicted. I'm sorry, I, I forgot that.
You just made a motion to go into executive.
Okay, all right.
I guess, do we have to state what the purpose would be?
Yes.
Or legal advice?
I, I didn't, I didn't understand that comment, Dr. Hibbs. If it fails, you have to do what?
If, if it fails, there needs to be a clarifying statement to what you just attacked with in public, which was not fair.
I had negotiations update on the agenda for executive. These comments should have been made in executive already in the beginning. They were made in the public, and now we have to address it. All in favor of going into executive, say aye.
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 I, I, I want this to be like a 10-minute executive, you guys. So, I'm going to say- We will leave the room, they can stay. So, resolve that pursuant to section eight of the Open Public Meetings Act, that public shall be excluded from that portion of the meeting involving the discussion of the negotiations. Further resolve that discussion of such subject matter in executive session can be disclosed to the public if any action is taken by the board, either at the resumption of the public session, at the conclusion of the executive session, or at the public session at a later date. This executive session will last 10 minutes. No action will be taken. Well, we might take action when we get back because we're still going to have our meeting, so, excuse us, we'll be right back. So excuse us. We'll be right back.
Can I have a motion to close executive move back into the public session?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Elaine second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. I don't know, what was the result of your conversation? Can we move on or is anything happening?
I don't know if anybody...
So I think Scott wanted to say something when we came back, maybe.
He went to the restroom, I think.
He went to the restroom.
Okay. Eric, you want to say something?
Uh, Dr. Hibbs.
Yeah, Mayor. In my opinion, the comments made by Mrs. Baker are inaccurate.
Can I have a motion open to the public?
Motion.
All right, here comes Scott. Did you want to say something, Scott? No? All right. Can I have a motion open to the public?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You guys, I don't have any cards. If you're, if you're, um, sorry about that. Hey, I could have been collecting these cards the whole time or jawing in the hallway. If you're new to the meeting and you don't know this, if you would like to address the board at the microphone, you just get a, uh, I guess now they're beige cards or yellow cards.
Whatever cards start with.
They're like a rainbow of yellow.
Like a tote.
And you can pass it to Mr. La Liberty or Ms. Chilla and they'll get it down my way. Okay, April Renzetti.
Good evening. No, you're good. For those that don't know and for some of our new NJEA reps that are here, my name is April Renzetti and I serve as the Vice President of the WTEA. My purpose for being here this evening is twofold. One, to speak about negotiations and the other to speak about Eric Hibbs' insult said to me publicly at the last meeting. First and foremost, hold on. My apologies for that. So Scott, you started the meeting saying that you wanted to clarify that the last time we met, you were questioned about negotiations and that there was an assumption that there was a possible ethical charge because of a conversation and that you voluntarily stepped down. That is not our recall of it. Our recall of it, there was conversation, comments and information being put on Facebook and basically you were suggested by the attorney, Mr. Bentley, at the time to step down. So I just wanted to clarify that the version on the other end is very different. Neither is here nor there. It's in the past. However, with that being said, you are fully aware of how negotiations go. You wanted to make a statement to Connie last week and you said you wanted to know and that you wanted to be informed during the process. You know, being on negotiations last time, that some of you cannot be on negotiations because you're conflicted. However, at the end, you get to vote yes or no to the contract.
Ms. Renzetti, I'm sorry, you have to address the presiding officer.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I'm just trying to address who spoke to what topic, but my apologies. So you do have a say in the end when we get to that part. With that, I don't know what just transpired. I can tell you that I sit on the negotiations team as the Chair of Negotiations. The first two meetings that we had were very successful. They were polite, they were respectful, they were moving in a good direction. There was a lot of give and take on both sides. The third meeting comes with you present and it totally took a turn. Since your question and since your presence, that last meeting took a very negative spin on what the first two meetings looked like. My question, for those of you that sit in the back on negotiations and I guess for you, what happened? When we went to caucus and you went in the back room, where was the change in the tone? What happened? Because there was a complete shift in the movement we were making. So my team would like to know what caused that shift. If you can answer it, we would appreciate that because the tone was a complete change. So we would like to know that. Regarding your comments to me when you said you find me at times to be disrespectful, well, it was rude and I'm not rude. I am, I'll give you a list of some things. There's too many.
Address it. Talk to me.
Excuse me?
Address it to me. Megan's telling me. Address.
Okay, sorry. I'm assertive, I am passionate and at times when need be, I am aggressive, especially for things that I deeply care about. 100%, will not hide it and will never apologize for being a strong woman. I didn't get to 55 years old and be who I am because I was shy. So that's not going to change now. I'm doing my job to the best of my ability to protect, guide, help when my members, colleagues and friends need that. Since you've been back, fear, uncertainty and great concern has been paramount. You are supposed to be the leader of this district. You name call employees, you send your lawsuit that you're suing the district to a Facebook organized group, you've cut jobs numerous, all while people you hire, you hire a top of guide with little to no experience in those positions. I want to personally thank the numerous community members who reached out and apologized on your behalf and found that your behavior was completely unprofessional, unwarranted and I was simply doing my job as a union officer. In closing, I just have to say you can't put children first if you're putting teachers last.
Thank you for your comments.
I just want to say one thing, because it keeps coming up. I stand by my comments about why I stepped off negotiations, but I also think, I just want to give the context of what I said. Back then, it was the support staff and contract was, was under negotiation and there was a lot of comments about they weren't feeling valued and things like that. All I said was, "You are valued." I was trying to let the support staff know that people cared, that I thought they were important, that I appreciate all the hard work that they do. And then I said, you know, "Don't worry, all contracts are retroactive." In my work, in my line of work, I don't think I've ever seen one even here that hasn't been retroactive, but they don't necessarily have to be retroactive. That was the slip up that I made, but my intention was just to show the support staff that they were appreciated. But for the avoidance of all doubt, to not have that go any further and cause any disruption to the negotiations to the administration or embarrassment to the board, I stepped off.
So before we continue public comment, all, all comments should be directed to the Board President, please and thank you. And then for the board members, any comments that will, that need to be had can be had after public comment is done. You can say whatever it is that you need to say, but please don't do it. Don't, just stop the flow of what's happening.
Thank you, Megan. Heather Whitcraft.
Hi, Heather Whitcraft. Um, I don't know how to say this then. All right, I guess I have to pretend I'm talking to Julie. Okay. I'm struggling to understand how you can request merit pay while at the same time suing the district publicly, insulting and degrading our educators and we're just preparing to deny not, that. And we're just preparing to deny nine long-serving employees the lifetime benefits they rightfully earned after decades of dedication. All this comes amid the bottoming out of staff morale during your tenure. How can you sit there in a position of leadership while suing the district and smearing the board actions that directly were against the betterment of our schools and community? Second, um, last night until about 2:00 in the morning, I spent emailing participate in education's meet the candidate night will be held Wednesday, October 22nd from 5:30 to 8:30 at the Washington Township Senior Center. All petitioners for the BOE candidacy have been emailed their survey, invitation, instructions and important notes to keep handy. Please check your spam and junk folders if you do not see it. Lastly, I provided my phone number and email address this week and last week and would like to be contacted regarding anything that went unanswered last week as well, anything that may need additional time this week. Thank you.
Mrs. Whitcraft. Michelle, I said thank you, sorry. Michelle Panchelli.
Good evening. I don't work here, however, I am a resident of Washington Township and I'm a 30-year special education teacher that just recently retired. I just wanted to say that I had some concerns about the school district that, that had made the news recently and not necessarily in the best light. From a procedural standpoint, it's very normal practice in most school districts that when an employee, a teacher, a support staff, an administrator is accused of wrongdoing, that the employee is paid, is placed on a paid leave. On an administrative leave pending the outcome of the investigation. And you've probably taken these actions on many situations in the past and at times under the recommendation of Dr. Hibbs. It is a smart move, in my opinion. It protects the district while the facts and the truth can come out. It does not assume guilt or innocence. Dr. Hibbs' concern is nothing against you personally. In fact, I'm hopeful that the evidence from the investigation would clear everyone of any inappropriate actions. It would mean that our students' lives were not negatively impacted by the direct actions of our school leader. It would mean that our elected school board members did not abuse their position to gain an unfair advantage. Nobody wants these things to be true and I'm hopeful that they're not. With that said, our current status is that we actually have an employee who happens to have the highest levels of security access, document access and decision-making authority, working for the school district under an active investigation. That is not a good situation for our district to be in and in my 30 years of educational experience, I've never seen this before. So I'm concerned that politics and personal feelings may be taking precedent over protective procedures. Thank you for listening to my concerns and for all of your time as volunteers serving our community. I'm hopeful that the next time a news article is ran about our district, it's raving about our students and the accomplishments that they've made. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Tarashi. Rephrase that.
Jerry Tarashi, I'm the President of the WTPA, or WTEA, WTPA. Aside from Mr. Ross, I probably have the most years in education in this room. As many of you are aware, because I've said it numerous times, this is my 55th year in education. Between almost 40 years here and previous years in the previous district. When I first came here, I had heard a lot about Washington Township, mostly great things. It was truly a family experience. Teachers, administrators and members of the Board of Education truly cared about one another. In recent years, however, much of that has changed. Many of you seated at this DS, as well as those in the audience and watching from home, may remember those days. The days when the emphasis was always placed on the education and well-being of not only the students, but of all the employees as well. As I stand here this evening, about ready to begin my 55th year, I find myself disheartened by what I have witnessed in recent years. I'm extremely proud to have worked with such wonderful children, athletes and colleagues in all those many years. Unfortunately, I have seen a deterioration of that family atmosphere. Sure, there are people who speak about family, profess to be all about the kids, looking out for the best interests of the community. But the reality is far different. Today, what I witness is all about power. Essentially, who has the power, who wants the power and how far are people willing to go to hold on to the power that they possess or gain additional power? I'm a history teacher, so I'm very familiar with and very much aware of how power can corrupt people. corrupt people, how power can sometimes hurt children. I truly wonder how some of you can actually look at yourselves in the mirror or go to sleep at night without a conscience bothering over top of you. What has been done to the members of the support staff, which now seemingly has been rescinded to some extent at least, was egregious, to say the least. It's almost to the point of no repair within the district, and I hope that's not the case. What has been done, too far gone. The rescinding of those nine positions is great, but it's too late. They've already experienced the hardship, the pain that you have put them through. In regard to our contract, the WTEA, which is the only remaining bargaining unit that has no contract, we are ready to meet with you tonight. Immediately following the adjournment of this meeting, we will meet with you tonight and settle this once and for all. In the meantime, however, you've got to realize and face up to the fact that there are people in this room who are simply out for nothing but power and that power will destroy this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terashi. Nicole LaNudi.
When you guys previously talked about the money that Annette brought from one place to bring it to the other, I was really happy to hear that the nine staff members who so deserve that got brought back. It was concerning to know where it came from since it was heard that Annette had put it somewhere. While you guys were in executive, I did get that answer for myself, but I do think it's important to let everybody at home watching know where that money was pulled from. There's so, my phone started blowing up with so many concerned parents in special ed that more money was getting taken away from our own and where that money was coming from. So I think it's really important to address that and where it was taken from, that we're not losing, you know, more people to save our own. And I was pretty pleased with the answer as to how that happened, so kudos to you guys for Annette for doing that. I had one question about the bill list, two questions about the bill list. Does anybody actually go through the actual bill list by line just to know what's on there? And there was one thing on there, and this is totally out of my wheelhouse, so I have no idea what the answer is, but again, when I want to know something, I ask. So there was something on there, about $11,000 for a month for copier rental, leasing, copier leasing? Is that something that we pay every month? Is that $11,000 every month that we lease these copiers? Would it be more financially responsible to look into purchasing equipment rather than leasing equipment? And the answer could be no. I mean, it could be the best thing to do is to pay $11,000 a month. Is it ever more than that? Is it less than? What's the average that we pay on leasing equipment? Because when we're talking about leasing the building versus selling the building, the leasing seems to be the financial best option when it comes to this type of equipment. Is there anything else besides copiers that we lease that may be able to save us money if we purchase them and did the maintenance maybe in-house? That was pretty much it. We'll wait until the end of public comment for Janine to talk about that, but we actually have a lot of things that we lease that goes into the lease, so Janine will talk about that when we're done the comment. Angela Teruso.
First of all, let me say thank you to everyone here who worked so hard to get those nine people their benefits back. You have no idea, or maybe you do have an idea, of exactly what that means to them and even to us. I had other members, there were 59 people that lost benefits. 50 of those people called me and said, "Give them their benefits. They come first." So as I've always said, our support staff, that's what we're about. We're about other people. You know, I've said before, you know, we're the ones that have the least and give back the most. So thank you for those board members that voted in favor of restoring those. For some people, that really is life-changing for them in their retirement. The speech I prepared was actually a little bit different, so I'm going to divert from that. I wanted to say that between June and August, we've had 10 teacher resignations, we've had 31 support staff members resign, and we've had eight people retire. That's a total of 49 people. That's devastating. We have 43, as of today, there were 43 support staff job openings. I don't know how you are going to open your programs missing that many people. And if I were a special education parent, I'd be very concerned about who would be working with my child because it's going to be ESS, we know that, you know, or I'm guessing that's who it's going to be. And it may be a revolving door when those people realize what they have to do and what's involved with taking care of our children, because as I've said before, no one takes care of our children the way we do. Our staff is second to none. I pride myself on that. I was one of them. They're the same way. They're second to none. You will not get better people to work for you. I wanted to say also that I was, let me tell you what I'm proud of. And this is the last meeting I'll be speaking as president. What I'm most proud of is a support staff that in spite of all the abuse the last couple of years, continue to show up and care about their students because it is about their students. I'm proud of a support staff that continues to volunteer for events knowing that they're not going to get paid because it's for their students and that they would suffer if they didn't do that. It wasn't about their money and it should have been, but it wasn't. I'm proud of a support staff that for the last, who makes the least and gives the most while in school and for our community. Those stuff-to-buses you see, that gives back to the community. And it's not just about union. It's never just been about union. We are a union, all of us together, and especially with WTEA. I mean, we all have been working together. The last couple of years have been devastating. This summer has been the worst. I mean, it has been nonstop for me and for a lot of other people. I guess what I'm also most proud of is the fact that many of our people have been taking abuse over the contract that we have. You know, it's a fair contract, whether you want to agree to that or not. It's a fair contract and I don't know what's out in the public. Everybody's screaming about these raises. They amount to $3. That's what you're yelling about, $3. $3 for people who make $15 an hour or $16 an hour. That's what you're yelling about. So, you know, I don't understand why we can't just all work together. We're in it together. You know, we talk about together with pride. That's what together with pride is. Let's support each other instead of tearing each other down. We need to do that. We have to move on from this and it's very difficult to do that. I mean, I don't know that I could come back after the year that we've had and the summer that we've had. It has just been devastating. Has been devastating for people. We lost so many amazing people to other districts and it's just devastating. So please, let's work together to get things done because we need to work together, all of us, the board, us, the teachers, everybody. So please, let's do that. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mrs. Teruso. Shereen Ducas.
Shereen Ducas, WTEA middle school exec member. The WTA has started this year without a contract. The very people in classrooms every day, working closest with students, shaping their learning and carrying this district forward. We have been left waiting while those at the top consider raises for themselves, whether it be tentative agreements for the supervisors, administrators, merit pay, whatever. There's a saying, "All that glitters is not gold." And tonight, that could not be more than true. On the surface, this district finds money for glitter, for flags lining the football field, for televisions in this very room, for $300,000 worth of furniture and only a handful of Dream Team classrooms, for brand-new desks for administrators at the high school. But if you look beneath the shine, what do you see? Students at the high school are sitting in two and even three study halls because electives have been cut. Tier support is virtually gone. ELA and math interventionists who once worked 101 and in small groups are no longer here. Secretaries have been slashed, leaving parents waiting longer in offices on phones and for responses to their urgent needs. All that glitters is not gold. And yet, while programs are gutted and staff are stretched thin, raises are on the table for people making the most in this district. So let me be blunt. If there is money for administrative raises, there is money for our WTEA members. If there is money for glitter, there is money for gold. Parents, pay attention. Ask yourselves, where is your money going? Is it funding glitter, the flashy unnecessary extras, or gold, the teachers and the staff who actually make your children's education possible? How can you claim we are in a catastrophic financial situation while handing out sizable raises at the very top? The truth is, the money is there. It's just being spent on the wrong things, on bad decisions, on priorities that serve image, not students. Our WTEA members didn't budget for refrigerators that are too large to fit through the door of the high school. Our WTEA members didn't budget for flags that paint the fence at the high school, for paint, for televisions, for shiny furniture. Our WTEA members budget their time, their energy, and their lives for students. That is where the investment lies, the real investment. This district doesn't have a financial crisis. It has a values crisis. And to this board, I leave you with this. Shame is when you know the right thing to do and still choose the wrong choice. Stop chasing glitter. Start investing in gold. Our WTA members and the students who are the beating heart of this district, stop hiding behind glitter. Start honoring the gold. Our WTE members and our students deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. First, let me start by saying, welcome back, Dr. Hibbs. As an alumni, former board member, and 40-plus-year resident, I believe in fairness of process and I've come and spoke here many times about that. And most of our community has that same expectation of our elected officials. Your recent suspension did not include fairness of process and I'm sorry for the collateral damage that you and your wife and your children endured. The board voted to approve a 7.13 tax increase. And during the process, they had to specify, you had to specify where those funds would be spent. Why weren't student activities, clubs, and sports a priority in that decision? Because the focus was on adults, not kids. Mrs. Hartong, I agree 100% with you. All viable clubs and sports should be included in the budget. They are the classroom after 2:00 p.m. I use the analogy of buying a car. Certain items come standard with the car. Student activities are the wheels of a car, vital to the educational process and the well-being of our students. My message to the board, like it or not, like him or not, the CSA, the chief school administrator of the district, is entitled to due process. Dr. Hibbs and the WTBOE entered into a contract to protect the board and to protect Dr. Hibbs. Please follow the contract language as it relates to early termination. It's not optional. It's not uncommon for board members to disagree on the effectiveness of a superintendent. The issue occurred back around 2014, 2015 in our district. That's when the WTEA had the, executive committee had the vote of no competence against a former The difference between that board and this board is that the former board followed the contract and they simply voted not to renew the superintendent at the end of his contract. Many members of this board made the decision to fire the superintendent last year. This was stated by Randy Ford when he came up and talked about being recruited to run on a slate. Following the contract, following the contract would not be fast enough for those with a side agenda. That's my opinion and that's what we're seeing. The board invoked a fake doctrine of necessity despite the board having a quorum of non-conflicted members. They did this in order to manufacture the votes to suspend Dr. Hibbs. And I say that not as my opinion. The School Ethics Commission ruled that Mrs. Carol Chilla was not conflicted prior to the doctrine of necessity and she isn't conflicted as she sits there tonight. Quote, "This is just a procedural error." When the board president posted on social media and gave quotes to the Philadelphia Inquirer, was there former board action to delegate the authority to comment on a pending legal matter? Is there anyone on the board, show of hands, that disagrees with the comment that was made on Mrs. Chilla's, or I'm sorry, Mrs. Kuzempel's comments on the Ford decision? Is she speaking for you? That's all I'm saying. The president speaks for the board at board meetings and will delegate a specific authority to speak on behalf of the board, period. If it was just a procedural error, I would ask the board right now to put forth a motion to invoke the doctrine of necessity filed by, followed by a formal vote to put Dr. Hibbs on pay to leave. This is an advertised public meeting. You can do that. Make the motion. Somebody make the motion. And the reason you're not is because you can't. You have a quorum of non-conflicted board members. That's the story that people don't understand. That's what happened and that's why our name is in the Inquirer and that's why lawsuits are being piled in Gloucester County. Just do it the right way. The third motion I would ask that the board consider tonight is to terminate the solicitor's contract by sending a 30-day notice. I didn't know this was going to come up. This is some notes I wrote before. Your contract has a 30-day out clause. She can make a motion to terminate the solicitor's contract and you don't have to, Julie, you don't have to have another lawyer set up to be voted in as a new one. That would be an RFP process. So listen, I'm going to come back because I have one second. Sorry.
Thank you. Tom Baldassaro.
I agree with a lot of what I've heard today. We never should have gotten to a point where we had to add back long-term people. That all should have been considered in the negotiation process. We, you know, everybody deserves a contract. You know, I've said this before, every employee in this organization deserves to be paid at market and to get, you know, an annual increase. I think the sobering reality is that for every employee we have in this district, not everybody can be full-time benefit-eligible. There's not enough money. Now, I've sat up here one other time that, you know, I went back and I looked and there were six years of using budget reserves to fill our gap. And I said that that was all the data I had. Well, I had opered some more and, you know, I opered back what I thought would be far enough and I opered back to 2012, 2013. That's 13 years. That's 13 years. Every year, not counting this budget year, but every year for the prior 13, and this is not a shot, obviously, you guys haven't been around. This is a, it's just a comment on our state. Every year for 13 years, at least, because now maybe I'll oper older stuff, to the tune of $127 million we used to cover budget shortfalls. We've been spending more money than we've made for at least the last 13 years. We've never done it right. That goes back, I believe, that goes back to before Joe, I don't know who the super was before Joe Bolendorf, but it goes back that far. This is how long we've been in a budget crisis that was never communicated. I never heard, I've been following board meetings for 10 years. I never looked at the details that, you know, I have until recently, but we've been using reserves for that long. The sobering reality, again, we're going to be facing more. Prior to the last two years, if you look back the four years prior, we spent an average of about $5 million upkeeping our buildings. The last two years total, we spent under 1.5. We're gonna, we're playing Russian roulette with our buildings. And when you get that major repair and you have nothing, you know, to cover it, you're going to be cutting on the fly. There's just not enough money to go around, and that's, you know, I urge you, take the time to plan. Don't just look at next year. Look at five years out. We're, you know, I heard people, people are leaving. Yeah, it's going to get worse, because we don't have a foundation to bring people into. A lot of the, you know, you kind of pick and choose, when do you want to point to the budget being a problem? You know, five-year contracts shouldn't have happened. It binds future boards from decisions. Not saying people don't deserve money, but one year at a time, figure out what you can afford. Because what the decisions made, and Mr. LaLiberty said it, we've made decisions in this budget that are going to harm us into the future. And it's not getting better, guys. It's going to get worse. Okay? So, you know, there's just not enough money. Everybody needs to understand. Every board member, every employee, every member of the public, there is not enough money to go around for everybody. It's unfortunate, because again, in my perfect organization, as a financial officer, I want every employee paid market value. That's what I want. That's what you got to get to. You got to figure out how many people you can afford. Because cutting each year, cutting hours, cutting benefits, little by little, you're damaging the organization. You need to figure it out, do it right once, fix it so you can move forward. But until it gets fixed, you won't move forward.
Good evening, Mrs. Kuzempel. Steve Redfern, I am currently the NJA Field Rep for Region 2, and I represent the WTEA as well as Angela, who's behind me. I'd be remiss if I started my comments without congratulating her on her retirement, her advocacy for her members, and quite honestly, just being a really great person. So, thank you, Angela. So I come to you tonight not with 65 pages of a budget or a budget presentation or anything like that. I come to you with rational conversations, okay? There was somebody I knew, what I respected, a very long time ago, that said to me, "If you keep admiring the problem, it never goes away." This district keeps admiring the problems that we have, and we're not solving them. Okay? We continue to admire them. Okay? So I come here as an outsider, but I was a full-time release president in Cherry Hill for nine years. I know I'm going to hear, and I may even be in an email tomorrow that gets circulated around this community a lot with people's names in it. Maybe I'll be the other bald-headed guy. I don't know. But I'm sure I'll be in there. But from an outside perspective, I hear things. I hear things at the mic. Here's what I know, and here's my list of what I know. It took you almost four, five months to cost out a salary guide for the support staff and then finally make a settlement. WTEA is going to mediation. You have school ethics complaints flying around. You have a superintendent that is suing the district. You have people leaving the district. You have people that aren't sitting here tonight that I know for a fact, as an HR director, is going back to the district that I worked in, that he left, and now he's leaving this district. Okay? If I can continue on and on, I do appreciate the fact that you have reinstated those nine people as being dedicated employees to this district. It's one of the best things I've heard since I started May 1st and watching your board meetings. When I talk to people in Cherry Hill, or when I meet people that knew me from there, "Hey, what locals do you have in your new job?" I say, "Washington Township." The response I get is, "How's that going?" Guys, we got to change what's happening here. Okay? I'm going to present you, okay, with documents. It's an initiative called the Labor Management Collaborative that's running in New Jersey right now. Our district was part of it for three years. There's other districts. Woodbury is investigating it right now. Gateway is going to be joining the Labor Management Collaborative. You have representatives from both of these associations come up here. There's no collaboration right now. You have 36 unfair labor practices that have been filed at PERC. 36. You probably have about two more coming as well. Does anybody in this room want to guess as a full-time release president in Cherry Hill, how many unfair labor practices I had as the union president against the board or any other administrator in the district? Zero. Zero. 36. If you take that over 180 school days, that's one unfair labor practice a week. A week. Got to fix it. We got to stop admiring the problem and come up with a solution. I will leave this here with Mrs. Chilla at the side. I don't know if I'm allowed to approach. Some boards don't like approaching. It's always paper, okay, and drop it off. If you want to continue to admire the problem, don't read it. If you want to solve the problem, start to read it. You can reach out to Jerry. You can reach out to Angela, get in touch with me. We've got to start working together in this district. I had the honor, and Dr. Hibbs, I'm sure you know who Dr. Brad Johnson is, educational guru, brought him into Cherry Hill. One of the most powerful comments he ever said to me when we met, he spoke to our staff, he said, "The teacher's work environment is the student's learning environment." I'm going to change that, because in respect to Angela, I'm going to say, "The staff's working environment is the student's learning environment." So when I hear people in the community talk about test scores and this and that, "The staff's working environment is the student's learning environment." Thank you, Ms. Kuzempel.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's an interesting comment. If you look at some other suggestions, you might say, "The Board of Education's working environment is the student's working environment." And this great family that Mr. Tarashi alludes to, that was just broken up the last two years. I have news for them. We've been dysfunctional for about seven, eight, nine years, all right? Our test scores have been plummeting during that time. We had, at one point, three or four board presidents resigning, you know, for different reasons, with clouds over their heads. When Dr. Hibbs came on board, and again, I'm not a big fan necessarily, but we didn't give this guy a shot, you know? He just didn't have a shot. And I want to go to something Mrs. Teruso said. I also think that you wouldn't find in Cherry Hill, because I have friends who have kids that went there, you wouldn't find the assault on reason that you find at this level here in Washington Township. People say things that don't make any sense. They don't support what they say, and just say whatever they want to say, and then it just sits. It just, it just stands. For instance, the infamous complaint against Dr. Hibbs and Mrs. Chilla, I don't know who it's against really, just, you know, that they are too close and therefore she could not vote objectively. I guess that was the contention. Claims that Dr. Hibbs went to Mrs. Chilla's daughter's recitals, dance recitals, and Mrs. Chilla's daughter was never in a dance recital. So that never happened. I bet you that didn't happen in Cherry Hill. I bet you they would be very, I know the people there. They're supporters of education, and they're supporters of reason, all right? Now, let's go to Mrs. Teruso. I agree with you. When you make the statement, $15 and $3 more is, you know, not a lot of money. I agree with you. They should not. But who was responsible for that $15 during the course of the last 20 years and how many contracts? Maybe you are even the president, okay? You structure the money. Most boards of education do not object to the structure of the money. Occasionally, they do, but in Washington Township's history, that's been left up to the unions, and they've sold out their own. All right? So during that time, I, you know, I don't know what a custodian makes, but it's worth $15 an hour. So somebody was getting screwed during that time. And who was screwing them? You know, over a 20-year period? That's something we have to think about. So that 13% raise, all one shot now, to make up for all the sins of the past, so that we could have something to throw at Dr. Hibbs, right? Throw something against the fan, hope it splatters, right, onto him. That 13%, if you take an average raise of 4% or 5%, let's say, the going rate, that 13% is, let's say, 9% more. What does that come to in dollars? I've asked this question 15 times, and nobody's given me an answer. I'll tell you, I've had some people who are experts in the field say that it probably comes over $800,000, maybe a million dollars. So because of our sins of the past, right, and we're going to do it, and, you know, we're going to give them a 13% raise so Baker can get reelected. Basically, that's what it amounts to, right? And at the cost of the taxpayers. And then they get the 13% raise, and we make up for all those 20 years of their neglect, all right? The taxpayers are making up for that now. That's the great family we have here in Washington Township. And the dysfunction, you say, "Oh, the last two years have been brutal." It hasn't been two years. It's been like eight or nine years. In fact, I've been talking to people at Orchard Valley for those last eight years since I've been retired. Every day, I heard a horror story. Every day, about what's going on in these buildings. I saw it. I saw it at the high school, too, when I transferred over there for the last marking period.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions, because I've, you know, been watching the past few meetings, and I know, you know, it's come up several times with, you know, special ed concerns and the staffing issues. And there have been several questions that have come up, but I haven't heard any answers. And I just wanted to see if somebody could clarify exactly, you know, without specifics, without naming names, people, whatever, what is the number of students that have one-to-one aides, based on their IEPs? I know, you know, it was asked before, and, you know, I don't recall ever anybody coming back with an answer. Did any of those aides or specialized instructors have their hours cut? How many open aide positions do we still have to fill for our special ed students? And how many full-time aides do we have versus the part-time aides? I'm not asking for names, just numbers. I did also have, you know, another question in regards to some of the projects that were needing to be fixed in the schools. And one specifically was around the windows at Chestnut Ridge. I know last year, like towards the end of the year, when they were getting really heavy rains, the cafeteria was flooding. You know, was that ever addressed, or is that planned in the budget to get that fixed? Because that is a health hazard for our students. Because I know that they were delayed going to lunch because they had to clean up the floor so the kids wouldn't slip and fall. So that was just one of the things I did want to follow up on, just to see if that was still in the budget to be addressed, if it was fixed over the summer, and what the plans are for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to close to the public?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
The question about the aides, I passed your card to Dr. Hibbs, and they don't have that information.
I can get that information and pull it back next time for you for all four questions.
That's fine. Yeah, and I figured you'd need that.
And I think your question about the windows, it's in motion. Okay?
Nicole, back to your question about, I'm not comfortable talking about like the line items. I should have used the word transfer. It was transfer from one account to another account, so I don't want to speak to that. It's not really my place, but I think that was the one question, was can we talk about that? And, go ahead. Did you want to say something, Janine? Are you trying to turn your mic on?
I wasn't sure if you wanted to do that.
Oh. You can. And that's it. Okay.
Julie?
Yeah.
It's a quick question. I don't know if it was a legal reason why we can't respond one after the other. I wanted to respect it, obviously, but I feel like a lot of everyone's questions now, like now I forget. Like if I didn't, do you know what I mean? Like I just don't know how well that worked, and if we have to keep that structure. I do like it when we're able to answer if we can in the moment, and that way people following at home, when we have a lot of people come up. I think April was the first one that came up. Like I'm just saying, in general, I lost track of who asked a question and a comment, and if anyone wanted to say anything, I just don't know.
I write, I type up all the questions and disseminate them after the meeting to the proper people, and we have the cards of the people who asked them. So the administration gets in touch. I'll reiterate this, I said it in January, but Washington Township is kind of a unique animal in that people put so much emphasis, I guess, on the board. The board just is supposed to be providing oversight and voting yes and no. So when we have public comment, it's supposed to be, we're hearing you, we're not answering questions. So we do take questions, like the way it's actually supposed to work is, people come, they address me, I take the questions, and thank you, move on to the next person. We've gotten into the bad habit over the years of responding, and then other people on the board respond, and then there's just a lot of conversation, and it's just supposed, it's literally supposed to be a hearing. If you've ever, I really encourage people to look at other board meetings in other towns, and don't just look here, and look at board meetings for colleges and things like that. Like this is not typical of a board meeting in terms of public comment. It's supposed to be, you comment, you're giving us your feedback on what's on the agenda, not asking us questions and getting a response. And so Megan is just enforcing the way it's supposed to work, which I appreciate that. It's not really the place to be asking questions. Let's be honest.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily disagreeing. That's why I wanted to respect the process. I guess, in a time of turmoil, where communication is necessary, that's all. I just feel like we should over-communicate and respond where there are clear concerns and questions. That's all. That's my only, and I just.
It's really, I get it. I get what you're saying. I just, it's for the administration to communicate those things. As a board, we're just supposed to take in what people are saying, so that when we're in committee and we're discussing things, we can say, "Oh, remember at the meeting, people were asking about this or that." But it's not really the place where, I mean, Megan, you can weigh in on how it's supposed to work. I mean, I don't know if, this is just very, Washington Township is very atypical when it comes to board meetings. It's, there's not supposed to be this type of, it's not a forum. It's not a town hall.
The only thing I'm going to say is that it's typically not a discourse, like the public comment is, at the time, when citizens of the public come and they just, they tell the board their issues, and then the board goes back and works. and then the board goes back and works on them, but it's not a discourse. And so what happens is if board members start responding one at a time, it becomes a discourse because then they're going back and forth and it's public comment, citizens have five minutes to speak and that's what it's supposed to be.
Yes, that's fine. I just wanted to note it. It is a change and I just feel like there were a lot of questions. I hope to Pat's point earlier about getting out the minutes, I just want to make sure if people had questions, like questions that we can answer, that they're answered. That's all.
Yeah, I always say it's for the administration really to answer those questions. One thing I will say, just based on some of the budget comments, and I've expressed this to the board, you know, in, in our internal, everywhere. But I think I really need to just take a minute, and I'm sorry, I know it's late, but just to explain financially how this works. Because I see a lot of conversation and I hear things. Public education is funded by the taxpayer and it's funded by income tax. So all that state aid that we get comes from the income tax that's collected throughout the whole entire state. And then there's this bizarre formula that literally no, no one in the entire state understands that says this district gets this much state aid and this one gets this much and, and no, literally no one understands the funding formula for state aid. The other half of the money comes from the tax levy. So what everyone needs to understand about Washington Township is other big districts like this do not get anywhere near the percentage of state aid that we get. It's, and don't quote me, but it's, it's 50-ish percent. Half state aid, half local tax levy. And they keep cutting the state aid. So who's picking up that cost? The taxpayer has to pick that up. And so you have, we have to become independent in funding these schools and that's very difficult because now we have this massive infrastructure that was given all this state aid and then the state's like, I'm not going to pay for that. It's, it's like if you bought a mansion and then you had a job loss or a death in your family and now you have to continue to pay for that mansion with one salary. It's, it's absolutely impossible. You need to bring another salary in or you need to move. Well, we can't move because we have many schools, we have many programs, we have thousands of students and we have a massive infrastructure. So as the state aid starts to, is being pulled away every year, sadly, that's incumbent on the local taxpayer to pick that up. And that's just, that's just what we're left with, I guess. You know, we can't really close buildings. We're bursting at the seams at every middle school, every elementary school. We cannot close these buildings. We could probably stand to add a building, to be honest. But the, the state has put us in a situation where they continue to cut money. So you have to think of it like this. There are other districts out there, I'm not going to say the names so that everybody like goes and doesn't understand. Because there are some districts that, every district is getting state aid for things like special ed. But in terms of the general education of a student, there are districts like, I've said this before, Moorestown, that gets no state aid for their general education. They do get some state aid for special ed and things like that. But that, those people have more control over what happens in the schools because they're paying for it. When you have, when you get state aid, you're, you are beholden to the state's requirements and you have to, you know, assess things and do things the way the state wants you to do it so that you can get that money. And that's why we have something called CUSAC where they come in and they kind of look at how we're running things. And so if you want to kind of, I hate to say it this way, but if you want to get off state aid, like get off welfare type of a thought, then you have to become independent. We have to become independent in how we're funding things. And at, and so also at the same time, you know, I see people talking about what I'm going to do and I'm on the board and all this. Like as a person, you can say, I don't think you should spend money on that, on, on a teacher or, or support staff or whatever. You should be spending it on this. As a board member, you don't have the luxury of that because we're the, one of the largest employers in this county. And so we don't have like healthcare for all in this country. We, our employees, we pay their healthcare. We're paying for their pensions. We need to support them because they're our employees. Like I know not everyone has that opinion. I have that opinion that we have an obligation to our employees to not just chuck them out the door. And 90% of our, our costs are human resources. So, you know, we keep talking about these warnings and what's coming down the pike and, you know, and I do this in my business. It's, public education is not like your business. It's, it's nothing like a private company. You could be CFO for Google and you don't know what we're doing here. It's just different. It's public education and it's funded in a way where we really are going to have a problem here and it's not really the fault of anyone up here. It's the fault of the fact that the state keeps cutting the amount of money that we get and sadly, our taxpayer has to pick that up. So what can we do? We have to do things like full-day kindergarten, full-day pre-K, offer things that make people move here so that we can increase the tax levy. We can increase our property values. You know, my house went up almost $200,000 in value over the last five years. I don't know exactly why that is, but people are moving here for some of those programs, for our autism program and things of that nature. So if you want to help the situation, really, you should go on city council. Because they're the ones that can, that can really increase proper, you know, the, you can do things with the town that make people move to the town. The only thing we can do is, is what's in the schools. I don't know if this is making sense. I'm trying to say we have to get off state aid. We have to get off state aid. We have to become solvent. And you're talking about $170 million budget, half of which is given to us through state aid. It's very difficult to make these decisions. So I just kind of, I mean, I'm happy to explain more of that to people who have questions, but that's how it works. Okay. I hope it makes sense. Okay, moving on. Can I have a motion to approve item number one under report of the superintendent?
Motion.
Second.
That's an all in favor, right? I just had a brain, okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom? Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yep.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes, motion carries. Motion to approve item number one under instructional affairs.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes, motion carries. Under student activities and communication, motion to approve items one through four.
Motion.
You got a second? Second? Ralph, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Abstain on number three, yes to the rest. Motion to approve items one through 41 under human resources.
Motion.
Second.
You have a second? Scott, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes to all, abstain to M38.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
This is human resources, correct? Just want to be short.
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes, abstain from number 37.
Mrs. Baker?
Abstain to number 37, yes to the rest.
Mrs. Bloom?
Abstain to 37, yes to the rest.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes, all.
Everything carried, right?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, under finance, there are a couple of things deleted. So motion to approve items four, six, seven, nine through 33.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
I have a question under the warrant, the warrant list with ESS and the summer payment for aides. I did mention earlier that I wasn't able to get the link for that. In other words, I was told that the board approved the payment for assistance that would have worked during the summer. I wanted to find out what, what we're paying them per hour. Does anybody know that right now?
I can certainly email the board.
Thank you.
Do we, do we also have a breakdown of how many aides in, in the summer program are ESS versus our aides? Because I know I saw where we were asking our people, our internal people, if they wanted to work during the summer. Do we know what that breakdown is? Can I get that information?
We'll add it to the list.
Okay. I also have a question on Genesis. I see it's a pretty hefty cost, $200,000 for Genesis. I'm just wondering, is that a monthly amount or is that a yearly amount?
Yearly.
Yearly.
Yep, the annual fee.
Are we, are we complete now with Genesis? Is that fully implemented over Power School?
Yes.
At some, not now, I know you may not know that. But I know that we were told that when we moved into Genesis, there would be a very big savings over Power School. At some point, can we get information as to what we were paying in Power School and what we're paying now in Genesis? Because I understand that there have been some things added with the Genesis program that maybe we didn't talk about initially. So I, I would just like to know what, what the amount Power School cost us and what Genesis has cost us at some point.
Sure, no problem.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I just have one. When I vote, I'm just going to be voting with the context that I think it's important that we uphold our contractual obligations. I think that's all, about all I can say with that.
I'm going to go on what Scott said. It's a contract, it's a legal contract and that will be why I'm voting for certain things under finance.
Roll call, please.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Abstain from N numbers 29 through 32 and yes to the rest.
Mr. Ross?
Abstain to items number 29, 30, 31, and 32, yes to the rest.
Out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to be abstaining from 29, 30, 31, and 32 until I get further guidance from the SEC. Yes to the rest.
I'm going to, was I supposed to say each number? I'm sorry. Did I do that wrong? I said 29 through 32, but did you want me to say 29, 30, 31, 32? Or does it matter? You understood where I was going?
Yeah. And Connie, you're 29, 30, 31, 32, correct?
Also, I should note, Mike brought this to my attention, that under number 32, it says goal one and that should be goal four. Because it's just a dupe. It says, so 29 says goal one, 30 says goal two, 31 says goal three and then 32 says goal one again and it should be four, goal four. Sorry about that. Well, I'm not sorry, I didn't do it, I'm just saying. Yeah, 32 should say four.
No, they, they're quantitative and qualitative, they're different goals.
I don't know, okay, sorry. Never mind.
Mrs. Bloom?
I am conflicted, so it's yes to everything, but I abstain from 29, 30, 31, and 32.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes to all.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes to all.
Mrs. Hartong?
I am conflicted for 29 to 32, but yes to all the rest.
And Ms. Kuzempel?
I'm conflicted on 29, 30, 31, 32, so I'm abstaining, yes to the rest.
I don't think that's. One, two, three, four, five, six. So, motion failed. Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Special education, items.
Did that pass or didn't pass?
Motion filed for, oh, for.
Motion to approve items one through four under special education.
Second.
Any discussion?
Who's that? Scott?
Yeah. Seeing none, roll call.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I blanked out for a second. I'm not going to lie. Is there a way that we can put into IA the, the discussion of what we can do to possibly bring back some more of our special ed students that are placed out of district? Can we put it in committee? Was that a committee conversation?
Why don't we break out the specifics? Instead of saying, can't we bring them back? Let's, let's talk about the specifics surrounding.
Right, of why they're, why they were put out.
Yeah, for sure. We can absolutely put that information into IA for you.
Roll call.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes, motion carries. There's some confusion about whether items 29, 30, 31, and 32 passed because we were told by Ari that they needed five votes. Dr. Hibbs says it's under finance, so it just needs a simple majority. And so we don't know actually if that passed. I guess Megan is checking.
Six abstentions.
Six abstentions. So only three people voted yes. Is, I don't know, what does that mean?
Isn't it a personnel issue?
Well, abstention.
I think we should just not talk about it.
Yeah, I don't know. You can just let us know. Anything under negotiations?
I gave my report.
Okay, items of new business?
I said one.
I have some, too.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, sorry, I didn't hear you there, Pat. I thought it was the comment that was brought up in public session I thought it was the comment that was brought up in public session about comments to the press or quotes to the press. Yeah, I wasn't aware of that one before it went out. Do we need to maybe in committee revisit about public comment and how we go about authorizing? I know sometimes you probably need authorization quickly, but is that something we should discuss in committee?
Yes, I think we should. What committee would it belong in? That's the question.
I think all of them.
I don't know.
I mean, I guess, because we don't, again... I guess SAC. I think SAC is good.
It's on my list. Is that all you had? Pat?
Okay, I had, the one thing I wanted to say was, I think we talked about the Labor Management Collaborative. Someone brought that up, and I have been researching that over the past few months. It's really a good thing for our district to think to get involved in because when we're talking about one day having to do referendums, this is a tool that they use to help get not only the staff, the board, but the community on board and have that transparency as to why we're doing a referendum. So I think it's something that the board needs to really consider carefully and look into. I also have, I'm hoping that once we have our board goals, if everything is finished with Genesis, could we at some point look at our Board of Education website? And I think we could revive that and have some things that are good for the parents and staff and community to know about the board on that website. I'm not sure when that would be. Also, when you talk about this budget thing, we've talked about it before. I mean, maybe at some point we need to think about going back to voting on budgets in April. We never did, we don't do that anymore, but I believe it was a tough thing, but it really, when that was done, you really got input from the community as far as what they valued in the budget. And it was a back and forth between everybody. It was not just the board and then the community. It really, it's just something to think about. And the last thing I have is, I've been looking through all these agendas from the other districts, but in general, one of the things that apparently we have done incorrectly was we were supposed to... We should say, and I'm not sure if it's true, that our meetings start at 6 o'clock. Then you go into executive, but the option is for the public to sit there. From what I've looked at other minutes is ones who start at 6 routinely say, "We will be back out of executive at 7:30." So you don't really even need to wait, that would be said. But at least that way, if people wanted to be here in case we did come back out, they have the ability to do that. So I was thinking that might be something that we want to look into. And let me see. I had talked a little bit about, I don't know what Lori's timeframe is, and I don't want to add to her stress, but I really think we should think about as a board, having the minutes, that we all review them before we come into the next meeting. Like, for example, last week's minutes were pertinent for this week. July 29th was pertinent for last week. I think, I personally think that's a reason that it would help hold us more accountable as board members. And I would like the board to think about seeing if we can work with Lori to have that done. I think the hardest one would be the work session, to have it then ready for the regular session. The other one could take longer, as long as it was before the next session. So, thank you.
Julie?
Yeah, I just want to comment, Pat. Your idea about starting at 6 o'clock, to me, sounds like a good one. Especially because if we have students making presentations, they could do it at 6 o'clock where it would not be late. They have to go back home, stick schoolwork or whatever. How would we expedite that? Is that something that Pat would make a motion on? Is this something you have to go to committee on?
Question was, could we, so here's what happens, like, and I don't know if people know this, but when we come here at 6 o'clock for our executive session, I open the meeting to the public, and then we motion to go into executive, and then we come back out of executive at 7:30. And so that has recently caused a problem because there was confusion about coming in and out of executive before 7:30. So the suggestion, I don't know if this is what Pat suggested, but what I suggested is that we advertise that, that we open to the public at 6, then the board is going to have, just be transparent about it. We're going to have executives for an hour and a half, and then we're going to have a public meeting at 7:30.
So if I could just jump in real quickly? I think to be fair, we didn't advertise to the public that we were going to take action. That's the issue, from what I understood. Like, if we're going to take action, we have to advertise to the public, so they know we're going to take action. Because if not, we're having everyone come at 6 o'clock, and they're going to sit out there, and they're going to wonder, are we taking action, are we not taking action? I just don't think that's fair to the public, that they're not going to know, and they're going to sit here for an hour and a half. And sometimes they sit there anyway for an extra 45 minutes because we don't come out of executive session. I just think it's really unfair because people are coming here, whether they're bringing their kids or not bringing their kids. I just think now we're asking them to sit there. Because if we're going to take action, I think just we have to transparently advertise that there's going to be action taken. That's it. And then that way, advertise the meeting to start at 6 and say, action may be... Like, if we just do that for every meeting, I just think that that's really unfair. And I don't think we're being transparent with the public.
I understand what you mean, I don't really understand.
Well, you said we're going in and out of executive. Really, the issue is not going in and out of executive. The issue is, is that if we're going to take action, we have to advertise that we're going to take action. That's what we would have to do, that was the issue last time.
But we don't usually come out of executive, we use that hour and a half. But the nature of the governance, we still have to start the meeting at 6.
I agree with you.
That's the part that...
We should start with 6.
We need guidance on that, like...
I think we should get, for sure, get guidance. I'm just stating, saying, the issue isn't coming in and out of executive session. The issue is advertising if we're going to take action. And if we're not going to take action, then we don't have to worry about it, we can keep it as is. But if we're going to take action...
The board used to meet in executive from 6 to 7, and then have a public meeting at 7. And we came in and out, I remember, other times, so...
I mean, I don't recall that.
It was a problem this particular time, but it never was a problem in the past.
Because we didn't advertise.
Again, every other district does it that way. We're the ones, we have the problem.
I think we need to get an opinion on it.
Yeah, I think we do too.
Sure, there is a good point. The reason why we're even talking about this is because we had an issue with it. And we should be, we should get it cleared up. Now, Janine, I thought when we do the posting, I thought we always have on the posting that the board may take action. Does it mean the board may only take action after it's advertised? Or when we say, when we're starting? So in other words, it says the board will start at 6 o'clock and then have executive. And I thought on those postings, it always says something about the board may take action.
So I think the issue is that the way it's advertised, is that executive session is at 6 o'clock, and the public meeting starts at 7:30?
Okay, so how could we resolve the problem that we had? I kind of agree with Pat that we say the meeting starts at 6 o'clock. And as we always do, we open up the meeting at 6, and then we go into executive. But then if we have to come out of executive...
And no action will be taken until 7:30 or after 7:30?
Why would we say that? We should say action may be taken.
I don't want to talk about what we've done in executive, but we did get an opinion in executive.
Okay, well, so this is what I'm going to say. Because before we jam, before we jam something through, again...
We're not jamming it through though.
Let's just get an opinion.
We actually had a lawyer tell us how to fix this.
Okay, I don't know if I agree with that comment, that's all. So I didn't hear it that way. So I just want to be clean and say, we don't have to rush it through, there's no reason to. Let's wait till the next meeting, let's get an opinion, let's talk about it and weigh the pros and cons, and then we'll come out as a board and make a decision, that's all I'm saying.
This is what I read at 6 o'clock. We open the meeting, and I say, "The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advanced notice to and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, public notice of the meeting has been given to the Board Secretary in the following manner: posting writ notice on the official bulletin board at the Eileen Abbott Central Administration Building, mailing writ notice to the Courier-Post and the South Jersey Times, and filing writ notice with the Clerk of the Township of Washington on February 19, 2025." And then I motion to go into executive, and then once we're in executive, I say, "Resolve that pursuant to Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act. The public shall be excluded from that portion of the meeting involving listed executive content. Further, resolve discussion of such subject matter in executive session can be disclosed to the public if any action is taken by the board either in the resumption of the public session, at the conclusion of the executive session, or in a public session at a later date." That's what's read. I think nobody is here when I read that, do you know what I mean? They don't come until 7:30.
Right. And I think the issue is that on the meeting notice, while it does say, I believe somewhere, that action may be taken, it specifically says executive session meetings begin at 6, and work and regular session meetings can begin at 7:30 PM. So, you know, if we're going to take action, we should plan on taking it at 7:30. You know, if you wanted to advertise that we could take action starting at 6, we could do that.
That's all I...
I think that would be inconvenient for the public, though, to...
It is, but it's...
Have to come every time and sit there for an hour and a half, wondering.
They don't have to do that, but the way we advertise it is wrong because we actually are in a public meeting at 6 o'clock.
Yeah, right, right.
Do you know what I mean? And so the way it's advertised is incorrect, I'm just asking to correct it. And we can advertise however we want. We can say, you know, no action will be taken until 7:30, or the board will be in executive from 6:10 to 7:30. But I'm just saying, the way it's advertised now is disingenuous because we are opening a public meeting at 6 o'clock. I'm reading OPMA, I'm reading the Sunshine Law, and no one hears it. It's not even recorded. It's not even recorded. And so then you have people saying, well, you made decisions in executive session. No, we didn't, we opened a public meeting, we went into executive, we came out of executive and went back in. Do you know what I mean? Like, we were following the procedure that our lawyer told us to do.
It just happened to be wrong. I mean, that's it.
Yes. I don't know, but I'm just saying, like, the, all I'm asking is that the advertisement is correct. It's not correct to say that the meeting starts at 7:30 when I opened the meeting at 6.
All I'm saying is I'm just asking for a very clear opinion to weigh the pros and the cons and not do something right now, because no one's really disgusted.
Yeah, I don't care if we do it right now, I just want it to be right.
And if that's the will of the board, of course.
That might come out in the appeal, right? We have an appeal going on.
I don't mind.
What? I think we need to wait and...
Maybe it will come along, I don't know.
It's fine, we can't discuss it.
What do we do?
Hold on.
We can't discuss it. We do, we do need to go back to that.
I have a question.
But first, we have to open to the public again.
Can I wait, hold on? I have a question, this is completely unrelated. Can we put the grading floor policy into committee?
It's done.
It's done?
Yeah.
We repealed it?
Yeah.
Can I get a motion open to the public?
Motion to open to the public.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Sean Lindsay?
Damn, I don't smell that bad, do I? Sorry. Good evening, Sean Lindsay, Washington Township. Just have a couple of things. Forget, I'm sorry, I'm going to call out names, if I'm wrong, don't sue me. I believe in the cold annuity back in February, you had made mention about how the whole board was part of a whole board committee. And with this current board, the smaller committees are a bad idea, and I fully agree with you. Because let's face it, the two most powerful committees that we have right now are HR and business. And who runs those committees? It's the same people. It's Ralph Ross, Steve Serrano, Connie Baker, and Julie Kuzempel is a proxy, I believe. So the two most powerful committees that we have on this district right now are run by the same people. Why is there no diversity, as we all like to talk? Why is there no diversity among the committees? So I think that the current climate, I do believe the whole board should be as a committee so everyone has a say in what goes on, not just four people. Also, moving forward, budget talks, student academics, I haven't heard one thing from anybody up here since Reorg about moving forward, about progressing student achievement, budget talks. I haven't heard one discussion about that in public. You know, we're facing the crisis that we did this year, we barely made it. Have you talked about it for next year? Nope. Why? Guess it's not important to you guys. Also, Ms. Bloom, I'm going to commend you again. Board goals, it's August. This was supposed to happen back in the first quarter. So why in the world is it not happening? Is it just not important enough to people? Maybe there's an update that I don't know about, which is probably likely because I'm not part of the board. But again, there's no transparency, there's no discussion about it in the public. And I've already said, public trust is, it's in the toilet. It's horrible. And that's not helping us. All it is, it's making you guys look worse. You're supposed to be bringing it to us because you're representing us. Well, I'm sorry, I don't want to be represented by this. It's an embarrassment. And the last thing I'll say, and this might be a little controversial, but don't really care. Ms. Kuzempel, how are you still the board president? I want everybody to go back, fact-check me. Back in May, I believe, you stomped out of here because things didn't go your way, and you on mic said, "I'm out, I'm done, this is toxic." To me, that sounds like a dereliction of duty to me. And yet, I think, I believe, I don't remember who said it, but I think somebody had made a mention, "Oh, I guess we have to get a new board president." But yet, here you still sit. I have nothing against you, but you literally left. You walked out of this building, out the door, saying, "I'm done, I'm out." That would sound to me that you don't want to be the board president anymore. So again, when you talk about, you know, procedure and all that kind of stuff, I'm sorry, if you leave, you should be done. My opinion. And the last thing I'll say is, on the contract issue, Dr. Hibbs, I'm sorry, I'm glad you're back, but again, I told you from day one, you're not going to win here right now, not with this board. They just violated your contract. Now, anybody in here who's still here, anybody? I'm not going to say names, I'm sorry, I can't. The people that are here, that you have a contract right now, what happens if that contract got broken? Are you guys just going to, I'm going to say it, bend over and take it? No? You would be screaming your heads off, saying...
Mr. Lindsay?
Sorry, Ms. Kuzempel, pause, I was supposed to be directing it towards you, my apologies.
More talking about the illusions you're...
The illusion?
The metaphor you're using at the microphone.
Sorry, back and forth. But I'm just going to, all right, my apologies, sorry, that was wrong. Okay, sorry, give me an ethics violation. The problem is this, is if there was a problem with your contract even, would you just sit there and go, "Hmm, I guess not, okay, I guess maybe not, maybe it's not worth it?" No, you'd be screaming your head off too, saying, "Um, hello, it's in the contract." The teacher's contract, if it's not followed, you give union representatives up here that will fight for it. They're not going to sit back and go, "Ah, no, you're good, we're fine, we're fine." No. You would be up here at this podium saying, "Why are we not getting what we are contractually obligated to have?" And I'm sorry, again, I don't know how they were able to vote no on that. It's a contractual obligation, and with the evidence, as long as the evidence is there, if the evidence is there and you did those goals, you should be paid, correct? Just like anybody else should. That's what I got to say, thank you.
Ginny Murphy?
If we're going to go back to old stories about the stomp-out thing, I think it was she attacked Ralph for not following suit on the vote, and then came back in and blamed Carol Chilla for being the common denominator, I think it was. So let's tell the whole story. Yeah, okay. So, I don't know what you just said, but I will start my time. So we were talking about litigation when I ran out of time. The third motion I was asking guys to consider was a motion to terminate the solicitor's contract by sending the 30-day notice. So you would send a letter saying you wish to effectuate the 30-day, effectuate notice of ending the contract in 30 days. And I'll use a sports analogy here. The Washington Township BOE is 0-5 in legal matters that I've sat here and watched for. Do you want me to tell you what those are? Because you have, I mean, I can answer questions, you won't. But first of all, three conflicts of interest were reversed, including yours, partially one of yours. So Mrs. Chilla, SEC advisory reversed. Eileen Clancy, SEC advisory reversed. Ms. Kuzempel, half of an SEC advisory reversed. Ms. Kuzempel's ethics case didn't involve this solicitor, but the ethics ruling by the SEC in July that you violated the State Ethics Act, broke state ethics law three times on three different things. Compromised the board, failed to protect school personnel, failed to protect confidential information. And then you give a quote to the newspaper saying that you've been vindicated. Now, as far as I'm concerned, that's not a win, but that's just my opinion. I'm sure you're going to find things to say because you can't talk back and forth, which is bizarre, that you have a public meeting. I'm not saying you need to answer every question, but any one of you guys that have something to say, somebody comes up with, you know, a positive thing to talk about, or whatever it is, you are not, you have a microphone in front of you, you can use it. It's crazy. So my point about this is, we need a lineup change. The litigation and the things that are going on, we need to get, either one, it's intentional to get very close and cross the line on legal advice because there are certain people on this board that want certain things to happen. And I've been here long enough to know that generally, when there's something seeking to be accomplished, it doesn't start with, "Can we?" It says, "The board wants to," and the job of the lawyer is to work backwards off of that and get, see whether or not it's illegal to do that. And most really good solicitors, and I've worked with a lot of them, will go to that line and won't cross it. I think people in this audience, especially with regard to the doctrine of necessity, feel that that line has been crossed. This is not a gray area. This is not a questionable decision. You, as elected officials, your job is to protect the people in this community that you work for, to protect our... you work for, to protect our students, to protect our staff. This is a no-brainer. The evidence is before you. Not because you don't want to deal with it, not because it's easy, it's your job to do that. RFP and get another lawyer. Maybe we'll start moving in another direction, a positive direction. Mr. Ross, I did have a question. Did the HR director motion, it failed, but that means you didn't cut the HR director position? I'll ask Julie, did you know on that? I was a little confused. Did you cut the HR director position? Because it went down 5-4, something? Okay. So, Mr. Ross, when you served two years as interim HR director in Williamstown, did you find that that was a valuable position for that district?
We didn't understand.
Thank you. You can talk to me after the meeting, Mr. Ross. We go way back. I just felt like you might have thought that that was a worthwhile position. Mrs. Baker, I don't even know what to say about what happened here tonight with negotiations because you essentially negotiated in public. You told your board member, Scott, last week, that we couldn't even have ground rules for the rest of the board, you would vote at the end, and you actually gave an update and to the entire public about why, what happened in the session during the negotiation. And I'm curious, because you're supposed to be negotiating on behalf of the Board of Education. So my question is, are you negotiating for the Board of Education, at least in that little scenario I heard tonight? I can't speak for the rest of it and what you do in negotiations. But it was a real conflict for me to listen and try to understand what side you were talking about.
Thank you for your comments. James Misati.
Good evening, everybody. James Misati, Washington Township. Wanted to support Julie with a couple of facts about the tax levy here in Washington Township. So I've talked about this data a couple of times. I had done a bunch of analysis on the 24-25 spending, and just for some benchmark information about what percentage of the local tax levy, how that compares to other areas and things along those lines. So the average for Gloucester County is 51% of the tax levy coming from the local tax basis. Washington Township's is 57%. So we are slightly above the average. There are 10 districts that have higher tax levies than us, and 16 districts that have lower tax levies than we do. In South Jersey, the average is, and that is Camden, Burlington, and Gloucester Counties, the average is 49%. And there are 35 districts that have higher tax levies than us, and 67 that have equal to or lower levies than us. However, one of the things that, the data point that I actually find to be probably most relevant and interesting is the fact that when you compare us to the 13 other districts, so the 14 districts in the state of New Jersey that have a population between 7,000 and 8,000 students, the average local tax levy is 66%. So there are only three districts that have a lower tax, local tax levy for a district of our size. So I just think that's very important because, like, we like to benchmark ourselves against other areas of Gloucester County, and that's important for cost-of-living purposes, but also, like, we are much larger than all the other schools in our area and need different resources. And I do believe that we probably need to be looking at getting more of our funding from the local community because of the fact that, like, we have this different benchmark data. So again, Ms. Cozempel referenced that, and I think there's data that supports the fact that districts of our size do tend to fund themselves a higher percentage from that. The other topic that I wanted to talk about was Dr. Hibbs's merit objectives. I don't know, I have not, I'm trusting the journalistic integrity of Ms. Bernie here in the audience. Her article in the Inquirer this morning talked about, listed out the five objectives for Dr. Hibbs. And I'm strongly in the camp of his contract says we set his performance goals and objectives, and that we need to compensate him for that. I'm reading these five objectives, and for anybody, you can, I don't know where they came from, or how they're, they're out there on the website, but these objectives are, I find them kind of disappointing, to be honest, that that's what we set for our school, chief school administrator to accomplish. I don't know at what point in time these get set. I don't know if they're publicly set, or if they're part of HR. I understand there's a lot from an employment standpoint that maybe can't be discussed, but the fact that we have members of the staff, the community out here, on different sides of this, and, like, I work in corporate America, I'm a fan of giving people bonuses and setting performance objectives. To accomplish these things and get paid $27,000 is disappointing to me. I'm not like, that's, if I was a corporate leader and somebody came to me with this and said, "These are my objectives, and I should get my 10-plus percent bonus," I'd be disappointed that these were the objectives that were set for somebody. So I would love, come next year, to hear the staff rallying for paying the superintendent their merit bonus because we accomplished things that moved our districts, our staff, our students forward versus making 15 Google presentations. Like, I just, yeah, that's kind of, that's what I've got to say. I think we can do better this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Lucarini.
You stole a bit of my thunder on that, the goals. However, the board has to approve those goals. I don't know, again, it's kind of vague about whether you made the goals, or the HR guy put forth those goals, or Dr. Hibbs made those goals. I'd be interested to find out who actually set the goals. And then, but one thing's for sure, the board had to approve that, right? So you approved those goals, and he met them. I mean, you can't change in midstream and say, you know, like Barclay of the Philadelphia Eagles. Maybe he had an incentive of, like, rushing for 1,000 yards. He ends up rushing for, I don't know, 1,600 or 2,000, whatever it was. They can't, the Eagles can't chase, "Oh, he was really good, so we made it 2,000 instead of the 1,000, we're changing it." You know, you get a goal, you set it, and he met it, assuming he met it, and all you're doing is setting us up for more lawsuits, all right? You know, because you have an agenda, Mr. Serrano, Mrs. Baker, Mr. Ross. I also find it interesting that they would actually turn around for us and ask him about human resources. When he was Human Resource Director of Williamstown, we had to work with them on the Hoagie sale every year. Charlie Dowd had a connection with Charlie Earling. And I remember asking him about his position on the NAACP executive board, or whatever, with my wife, all right? I never knew Ralph to be so sensitive about, you know, racial issues or whatever. I mean, he's good friends with Mrs. Baker, so that'd be one thing right there. But I remember him telling me, well, I got on air, and they gave somebody in the NAACP, I don't know if it was the president or whatever, her daughter a job as the truant officer or something, right? He was also president of the Board of Education when I walked into Tom Fleming's office with Eli Maslachoff many years ago, and there were little sticky notes on applications that said, "Hire, but don't fire, hire, but can fire." And Fleming was kicked off, I won't say pissed off, because Mrs. Cozempel, you know, she gets very upset about those things, even though she talks like a truck driver out in the parking lot. Anyway, he, Fleming was upset that this was going on while Dr. Tarrell was the superintendent. Now, I can't necessarily attach that to Ralph, but you were the president of the board at that time, and political hiring was rampant, all right? Rampant. So I find that pretty funny. Also, about the solicitor. How, Connie Baker, how could you suggest to add more duties to this guy? Like, you know, he is incompetent. He made a ruling here that was overturned by a judge, cost this district five months of more dysfunction, increased dysfunction, all right? And, you know, God knows how much money in court, and, you know, while we paid Dr. Hibbs to sit at home and do absolutely nothing, all right? That's not his fault. To suggest that this guy should be also the negotiator, or whatever you're touting him for, he should be gone, gone. And Baker, you'll just do anything. I'd like to see what Bush Law Firm is gonna be contributing to, you know, these different political action committees that then funnel money back and, you know, put up signs for Julie Cozempel and Baker. All right. And getting back to the, oh, the other thing I wanted to talk about was the woman who came up here, I think, last meeting, and made a statement to Dr. Hibbs that the BAs and assistant BAs in Gloucester County are getting $69,000 a year, all right? When you start comparing assistant BAs to comparable districts like Cherry Hill, sorry, boy, yeah, our guy from Cherry Hill's still here. Go see what they're getting paid. It's not $69,000. So Dr. Hibbs challenged the woman and said, you know, "It isn't," and then it was just left hanging. So you just come up here, say whatever you want, if you're from the WTA, and then just walk away and let it stand. That's why we're failing as a district, Mrs. Cozempel.
Tom Balasoro. Also, while Tom's coming up, I need to make a motion to extend the meeting past 11 o'clock. Can I have a motion to extend the meeting past 11? A second? Ralph seconded. All in favor?
No.
Well, we have to go back into executive. Was that a real no, or just?
Oh, it's a no.
Oh, it's a no? Okay.
I mean, if everyone else is making it.
I mean, I have no need to go back in. I thought you all wanted to do it. Okay. So then, let's, who are the yays for going back in? All right, let's just roll call it real quick. I apologize, Tom.
The worst.
We only have 10 minutes, so. Mrs. Baker? I don't know what she's talking about. I'm rolling calling for going past 11. She went to the restroom? Ms. Bloom? Ms. Clancy?
If we have to.
I'm taking a roll call.
Silence, please.
Mrs. Chilla? Mrs. Hartong? Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
No.
Mr. Ross? Mr. Ross? Ms. Cozempel?
Well, my vote doesn't matter, so I'm gonna give my true feeling, which is no. But we're going. But yes.
Julie, before Tom's going, can I just address something real quick? I just want to make sure that members of the board, that you definitely can see board docs, you can see the board packet, correct? So to make sure we can see that? Okay. Perfect. So I just want to state publicly that all the evidence that was voted probably down tonight was uploaded into that packet, which clearly showed that the goals were met. So I just wanted to state that publicly.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna pile on to a couple of the speakers, start with the goals. Yeah, I mean, if they got made, they should be paid, but I'm gonna really focus on, they're some of the worst goals I've ever seen in my life. If you're gonna get training on anything, goals is where you start. We've heard a lot of people talk about, complain a lot about different things, and we know we have a lot of things to fix. It starts with goals. You set goals to establish where you want to get to. So, you know, it's gotta be, you know, look up the term smart goal, that's what you want. There's a lot of training available, and I highly recommend you look into it because smart goals are, you know, very helpful. Talking about, you know, I hope that we got guidance on, the people who did not vote yes that could vote yes, you're adding to the lawsuit, guys. It's contract. It's in there. If they were hit, if there's questions about whether they were hit, then you should have voted no. If you abstained, you chose not to vote, you chose not to uphold a contract. And again, so whatever he was due, it's gonna be more in a lawsuit. So thank you for that. Talking about what Mrs. Murphy was talking about, she talked about 0-for-5. Let's also not forget, the, one day, Mrs. Chilla and Mrs. Clancy were legally conflicted, and then the next meeting, Ms. Cozempel, you stated, "Ri can't legally conflict anybody." So it was a bogus document. Mrs. Cozempel, you said in an email, "The board did nothing wrong. You relied strictly on lawyer, your legal guidance." Well, that's the guidance you got, why'd you renew the lawyer? Because there's the problem. It's unmistakable that it was screwed up. Not only are you extending them, you're giving them double the work, even when they didn't even know about our policy, that they couldn't do both positions. Now, I would say you should seek some guidance from the attorney, but they're conflicted on that because they can't speak out against themselves. You guys need a separate attorney. You need two different ones. That's how you do it. I don't, I honestly don't care what other districts do. I sent you all the research of actual practice, not what somebody else does. If somebody else jumps off a bridge, you gonna jump off a bridge? I don't know. You have to do the research on the practice, not what, again, not what other people are doing. If everybody's doing it wrong, you don't want to do it wrong. I sent it to everybody. The policy you approved tonight is not best practice. The most sane comment around that was from Mr. Liberty, who said, "We're still waiting on conflict council, independent people to give you advice." That's what you need, okay? It should not have been extended. We can't keep going, we can't keep adding risk to this district, and that's what you're doing, when you don't adhere to contracts. You know, it was said, and I'm just gonna repeat it, Sean Lindsay said it. You have to adhere to every contract, union contracts, superintendent contract, there's no difference. You can't pick and choose what you adhere to. You gotta adhere to them all, or we're gonna get sued.
Can I have a motion to close to the public?
Julie, can I say something?
There's a motion, and then you can. Motion to close to the public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead, Ralph.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, I abstained because I thought that the goals should be discussed in public. I thought the public should have known what was going on, and what we're getting paid $20,000 for.
Yeah, he can, okay.
Can I say one thing too?
I really think no one should be commenting.
Ralph, we shouldn't have any discussion about personnel in public.
Oh, no, it's not personnel.
It's, yeah.
About that kind of stuff in personnel. So that's not a, it's not a reason to abstain on that.
Well, I just want to say, I abstained because I'm conflicted, so I, that's why I abstained. No other reason, I'm conflicted. To go to Mr. Lindsay's comments about committees, we'll take that under, you know, I can't even think, it's 11, I've been, advisement. Yes, yes, yes. The goals, the goal, when it comes to the goals, like, we can't talk about that, but I wasn't on the board when the goals were made, Mr. Lindsay was, so maybe he knows why they were. But, yeah, a lot of us were not on the board, so can't talk about that. Oh, me walking out of the meeting, I would like to address that, actually, publicly once and for all. I did not surrender my duties. I know you really don't want me here, some people, but I didn't surrender my duties, I didn't do anything. We had a conversation about the fact that there needs to be a sitting superintendent at the meeting. And if you guys remember, we didn't have one. And we had brought Dr. Vesby back three times to have him voted in as the superintendent. This poor man came out with his wife three separate occasions to be voted in, and I can't talk about what happens in executive, but I was, I told Dr. Vesby, "You can come in, you're gonna be voted in," and that didn't happen. So as board president, everyone up here knew that the reason I walked out was because I wasn't running a meeting without a superintendent. It was just, it had nothing to do with, like, some of the things that you're implying it had to do with Ralph voting or whatever. I don't even know how Ralph voted, but I, it went down, and I was not about to sit here it went down, and I was not about to sit here without a superintendent and run a meeting again, because I had to kind of do that with an assistant superintendent, it just wasn't an ideal situation. And that's why I walked out, no other reason. So, anyone else have anything that they want to say? I think I answered all the questions that I can answer. Can I have a motion to move into executive? Motion?
Motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Yes, we have a motion.
Okay. Resolve that pursuant to Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, the public shall be excluded from that portion of the meeting involving the discussion of legal matters. Further, resolve that discussion of such subject matter in executive session can be disclosed to the public of any actions taken by the board, either at the resumption of the public session, at the conclusion of the executive session, or at a public session at a later date. The board will be in executive, I'm hoping, for approximately 20 minutes. We will not be taking action when we come out. So nothing else is going to happen tonight, other than us talking, opening back up a journey, and going home. Thank you.